Turned them all red. He's there just to keep our technology straight. We're gonna put in the budget, we're replacing all of these Microsoft surfaces, Robert. We're gonna go buy real computers. Did I say that?
Oh, thank you. Gosh, thank you. It's not just me. Okay.
Well, after I got this mouse, it made all the difference in me using this.
It's amazing how much difference a mouse and a real keyboard make on a Microsoft Surface, isn't it? So with that being said, Denise, I'm gonna turn the time over to you first. I know there haven't been a lot of questions about the budget, but I'll turn the time over to you. And then we can get to whatever else committee members want to talk about with the budget.
Thanks. You're right. I only have a couple of slides, which is good, because I think the majority of this should really be about about you and about what questions you have and go over that. So I have one correction I missed. Brian brought it to my attention. So I would like to ask that we add this to the tentative budget before you adopt it next week. And that is that I forgot to add a utility locator into the water fund. We've had quite some issues on water line damage by contractors, because we're not as responsive as we could be with blue state requests, or as quick as we should be as blue state requests. So Brian asked for a utility locator. The staff recommended that, and I missed it in the budget. So we could add that to the water fund. The wages are on the screen, and benefits are fully loaded for family coverage. It's pretty rare that this level employee has full family coverage, but we like to cover it just in case.
So this is more of a city operational question that you and Brian. So we actually have utility locators as opposed to paying blue states people? Or do we, sorry, do we pay blue states people too, and we fill in the gaps? How does that work?
I'll turn that over to Brian. Brian, you wanna unmute yourself?
Wait a minute. Let's see. Alan may need to promote him. Yeah, Alan can promote him. Brian, you should be able to talk.
There we go. Well, we locate all of our wet utilities.
Okay.
We do water, wastewater, and stormwater lines. And streetlights. We're trying to get better at the streetlights, but yeah, that's what we locate within our city. Anything that's ours, our wet utilities.
Well, streetlights aren't wet, I hope.
No, they're not, but we're starting to locate those now, because they get hit a lot with all the boring and everything going on in the park strip. So we're working on that. But yeah, that's what we do. And there's a lot with all the construction. It's right now, we're using a water employee to back up Michael Hopkins, who is the utility locator now, because there's too many tickets. And we've gotta get this stuff marked, or it gets hit, and then it costs more money, so.
Makes sense. No, I just didn't know that, I didn't know that we had that much, you know, when you call blue states, you just figure you call blue states, and somebody shows up and puts yellow and orange paint in your grass.
Well, when a blue state's called in, you'll see like different locating companies onsite, marquee stuff. They're locating like telephone, power, cable, gas, all the private utilities. We're marking our utilities.
Interesting to know.
So Brian, what you just said leads me to believe you already have one of these, but when I look at these, none of them say utility locator. So what is the person currently called?
It's probably called a blue staker.
I think it's called the utility locator, but it's in the GIS department, in the Public Works.
Okay, so are we adding it to the water fund, or are we adding it to GIS?
We're adding a second one, and I recommended it to the water fund, because the one in GIS is already split to all the other utilities. And the majority of the requests are supporting the water lines versus all the rest of them.
Okay, thank you.
And so before you go on, so this one's going to the Water Enterprise Fund, right?
Correct.
So with the enterprise, with the enterprise fund, the way it is this year, are we not gonna have any problems absorbing the 70K into the budget?
No, right now, the debt service ratio is 1 point. That's a good question, Calvin. Thank you. I appreciate that you're so sensitive to those now, because that really helps me do my job better as well. The debt service coverage ratio is 1.37, and the 70,000 can easily be absorbed into that. That being said, in the five-year plan, it may put a little bit of pressure on the last two years of the five-year plan. However, we hope that some of those revenues will continue to increase as we add utility users, so that would help us. But for the next four years, this should easily be able to be absorbed within the utility.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna make, because this, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I know I'm deviating a little bit, but with the water fund this year, we're not anticipating, we raised water funds in October, or we changed the rates. Let me rephrase that. We changed the rate, some went up, some went down. We changed the rates in October. We're not anticipating changing the rates at all until this time next year. Is that correct?
We will anticipate raising the rates in October of 2022.
Oh, so we're talking about a year from October?
Correct.
So we will be talking about the rates a year from now as part of the, okay.
Yes, yes.
You will see 3% is proposed in the five-year plan. So if the five-year plan goes as planned, right? We're gonna do a 3% rate increase every year for the next five years in water to keep up with the demands of water. But yes, we will be evaluating what that rate increase would need to be in one year from now, and they would go into effect October 1st. So you'd approve them with the budget, but October seems to be the best time to change rates, so that people can work into that spring season. We see that happening. It's a really good time of year to change rates.
Yeah, or I think. On the street, as you just did that, Denise, you just raised their water rates.
I didn't raise their water rates, I promise. We just reorganized them. We have the same exact revenue. We redistributed them.
And we lowered the base rate and a couple other things, and yes. But I just wanna make sure that, so that as we go through this budget cycle, that everybody understands that what we did last year with the budget, and with a year ago stabilizing the water rates, is that we really did make them, I'm gonna say we made a major accomplishment last spring, in the fact that we're stabilizing the water rates all the way through October of 2022.
Agreed. And I think that the other big win that you had was that you made them more equitable throughout the city, so that the subsidization between residential and business is very, very small versus what it was.
Yeah, all right, cool. Thank you.
I will tell you, those water rates are making an effect, and I would assume what's happening on the television is as well, as far as saying we're in a drought. But we've had several neighbors, because we have a Facebook page, asking about tearing out their park strip, and so they can save water and not pay. And I was like, that's, I mean, I'm talking like, maybe a dozen people throughout this neighborhood, and it's just getting in this chat, going back and forth. And I put on the flip your strip, you know, put that on there, and said, hey, check this out, see if you can get paid for it, but it's making a difference. So people are going, yeah, I wanna save water, because they don't wanna pay so much. So I was like, yes, go for it.
Yeah, well, my elderly neighbor is still watering her sidewalk.
Okay, well, it's not everybody, but there is some improvement. Let's take the wins while we can.
Hey, I ripped out, I ripped out another 250 square feet of grass on my front yard, so.
Okay, so can I see by, I don't know, some things that I can add this to the tentative budget? I've got Kayleen, I've got Kelvin, I've got Melissa, David is a yes, and Chris is, our chat is a yes. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll add that to the tentative budget. Okay, so the next thing that we're gonna do is a question and answer on the budget. I'm open to whatever you wanna talk about. And after we are done with that, we'll have a short discussion on property tax policy. And I've programmed a general fund five-year plan model that we can play with. And you can say, what if we did a 1% property tax increase? What would that do? If we did a 5%, what would that do? So the modeling should be able to help you make decisions and understand what those impacts would be to the general fund. So let's just open it up for discussion, and we'll try and answer as many questions as we can for you.
Questions?
Okay.
Okay, it says in here, under, I think both under the council budget, it's on page seven. It's a dog park and arterial beautification. Are we doing another dog park, or just fixing the one we have?
No, we're gonna be adding a dog park, and Corbin's gonna have to help me on this. I got asked this today for the location of where the intended dog park would be.
Oh, there's not an identified location yet. There's just, this is a list of possible small improvements. If we have a piece of land that's already owned by the city, where minimal improvements could add a recreation value, we'd like to do it. So a second dog park on the east side of our city is needed, but is not identified.
The corner of 22 and Sugar Factory Road, I think, is available.
Yeah, that was one of the, that was one of the suggested sites we're looking at.
And then arterial beautification, I'm assuming that's just kind of everywhere.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues we have across the city with either street trees that haven't been replaced, damages to back-facing walls, missing back-facing walls, improvements to our streetscapes in the entryway areas coming up out of the river bottoms on 70th South. You know, a number of issues where we wanna improve the aesthetics of the city through streetscape improvements.
I'm gonna throw this out there. I know that at least two of you already are aware, but a couple, two, three years ago, Dirk and I attended a thing with UDOT about the expansion of 9,000 South between the river bottoms and 13th. What their plan is, unless we add money for betterment, is to leave the existing cinder block wall and the existing precast wall, and then just put in something else on the sides of those where they're not there. They'll put in some other kind of masonry wall. And we really need to pay for the betterment along there. That's one of the major arterials into our city that goes into one of our commercial hubs. So we really need to have money for that betterment.
Well, I talked to Councilwoman Whitelock about this earlier today, too. And she made a good comment that she just didn't make, and I thought, wow, I didn't ever think about that. But that is a main thoroughfare into that Real Stadium as well. And if we were able to improve that area, it would maybe help people want to stay kind of on our side and spend more money than keep going into the Sandy side.
Kayleen brings up a good point. And it's been a couple of years since I saw the UDOT plans. What's the UDOT plan on that particular street, really, and on streetlights? Do we, if we, do we need to pay for, you know, here's what I'm thinking is, and I hate to compare us to our city to the south, but when you're driving, when you're driving north on Redwood Road, there's a, there's a spot in the road right about that big billboard that talks about a pawn shop. I'm not, you all know where I'm talking.
Big pawn, yeah. Big dog pawn.
That all of a sudden, all the streetlights end, because that's the boundary of West Jordan City and Sandy. And we don't, and you can tell there's a market difference between the South Jordan side of 90, whatever it is, and on Redwood Road and the north side.
There's a definite difference driving north.
What I'm wondering is, and that's gonna take some money, you know, at some point in time, that's gonna take a lot of money to fix Redwood Road. But we're hoping UDOT will fix that someday. But if we've got this 90th South plan coming up, do we have the ability to impact that to get a better aesthetic street light and some of those kind of things? I don't remember what UDOT's gonna do with some of the power poles, and some of the ugly wood poles that we have the streetlights on, and those kind of things. But is there something that we can do with 90th, as we're working with UDOT on that? Corbin, Denise, what do you think?
Yes, I mean, all those are betterments. We either pay UDOT an additional amount, or we put them in ourselves after the fact. Anything behind the curb, UDOT says, we don't touch it. City, you've gotta do it if you want it. We are, you know, so there are a lot. I think Kayleen, excuse me, Councilwoman Whitelock brings up a good point about the walls as a betterment. Streetlights along 90th is a really good point, and something we can look at as a betterment.
If we're gonna keep moving, I would suggest we keep moving to the west, where Councilwoman Whitelock, before I was on council, brought up that median on 40th, heading east. If you're 40th West and you head east, there's a lot of problems with people coming off Bangater and just cruising down that center lane. I've emailed them. In fact, my husband even did a concept to try to make it safer for people. And honestly, the two of us just decided, I guess they're just waiting for a really bad car accident before they do something. But I can forward you that concept that my husband drew up. Would, it'd be, if we can get something done about that, I mean, I tried to email them multiple times. This was back when Jim Riding was in, as was our mayor, but it's just dangerous. So if we're gonna be having that conversation, we could throw that in there as well.
There was actually a wreck with ambulances last Wednesday, I believe. Wednesday or Friday.
I'll email you that.
Anything inside the travel lanes is UDOT jurisdiction, and they'll own and they control. But.
We're aware. They just don't wanna respond.
Yeah. Anyways, this budget has some money set aside, both through RDA funds and capital project funds, to help us with improvements along our streetscapes. One of the things we heard loud and clear was, improve the aesthetics of the city. Let's find a way to make our city present better. We feel like the the best bang for the buck in terms of just sheer numbers of eyeballs seeing the city is along the back, the streetscapes of our arterials. And so that's one of the areas we want to try to focus on. If it's approaching our commercial areas or inside our commercial areas where there's an RDA, and we can create a nexus, we can use some RDA money for those streetscape improvements. If it's outside of those areas, we have some small capital project money for some of those improvements. If it's streetlights, you want to add as a streetlight aesthetic enhancement, that would come out of the streetlight fund. But that would, that would have to be programmed in. We have, I think we have a capital plan for streetlights.
And there is a plan for those lights on Redwood, Kelvin. I don't remember what, what all the details were.
I think that plan on Redwood is when UDOT decides to, when UDOT works on Redwood, isn't it?
Do we have a plan on trail lighting on some of our trails? I had a constituent bring that up recently.
We don't, it depends on the location. We don't typically light most of our trails. That's an added level of surface that we don't, we haven't, we haven't provided most of the time. There are some trails that are lighted in some spots, but for the most part, we don't light our trails. We haven't.
Okay. I've just had that come up as a concern a few times, so maybe then we can look at it for next budget year.
When is UDOT looking at fixing 90 South from the River East? Or West, sorry. I know that it was supposed to be this summer, it got delayed.
We asked to delay it.
Do we have any idea when that's gonna start?
I've heard that they've got it funded now, and it's gonna be moving forward. I don't know the exact timeframe, though.
Well, if, Brian, maybe one of those things that we, and Corbin, we can look at for some timing of some of these things, because I agree with Kayleen that, and if there, if it's time to, if we're gonna do the aesthetics, it's probably gonna be cheaper when UDOT's got the street screwed up than if, than if we have to go back and do it later. And so even if, even if we have to come back and relook at some, from my thought, is that if we have to come back and look at some budget stuff, to look at a couple of these things to, you know, because a lot of 90th, well, between 13th West and Redwood Road, a lot of that is RDA. At least on the, at least on the north side of the street, it's RDA. So, you know, that's where we may need to do some, look at some creativity again, like you mentioned, Corbin. But let's not, my personal opinion is, let's not miss the opportunity of fixing 90 South when UDOT's fixing 90 South.
Correct. It'll be least expensive then, and it will be least disruptive then, right?
You mean, you don't wanna pave it over, then dig it back up, then pave it over? Because that's tradition. I mean.
Yeah, we do enough, we do enough of that in front, never mind. I'm not going there.
I'll follow up on that and get some more information.
That'd be, that'd be great. The other thing, the other thing is, we're talking, if we're talking parks and those kind of things, the dog park, the small cap projects. The other thing that, and I think, I don't know if it was Corbin, you and I, or and I know I talked to, I talked to a couple of people, but you know, on that active transportation master plan, there's some city-funded projects, and some of those are very cheap. You know, if I remember well, one was like 10K. And we can knock out some projects and get some, get the trails finished, connected, and those kind of things. If we can figure out, as we're going through this process, a couple, three or four of those small projects that we can knock out and connect trails and fix trails that help tie in, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, I'm not suggesting we do the 2,700, the 2,700 West piece, you know, that's, 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 that's that's beyond the five, that's in the five-year plan plus. But I do know that in that active transportation plan, and I think we tried to get Bill to prioritize some of those when we did the active transportation plan, but Corbin, Brian, if you could look at some of those and maybe even, I mean, if we're short a few thousand dollars in the budget, but we could nail some of those projects out, maybe there's a way we can come up with, we can, we can shift some money or do something, but knock, knock, knock a few of those out, and just get them done and connect the city better. Just a thought.
Denise, if I remember right, there's money in the parks capital for some trail connectivity, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
I'm not sure if there is this year, because the staff is so focused on trying to get that Maple Hills Park done. So there is not this year, but there is in the longer-term plan.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
Well, I'd be willing, out of my personal opinion, at least for me, I'd be willing to look at, looking at some parks connectivity, you know, some small capital money to finish some of those projects, so.
We have, in the capital projects fund, we have a minor projects line item for things like that. So if we could identify a very small project, we have a capital project fund to fund exactly those kinds of things.
We did. We funded $400,000 in what we considered minor projects, for that exact reason. Things that'll make a big impact, but they're nominal in cost, and tend to kind of get gotten, and yet they have a public perception of a big win, so.
Well, and that's, that's the thing that, you know, as you look, I'm just referring to the general plan survey. But when we look at the general plan survey, you know, some of the things that you see as residents are saying, city's not doing enough for amenities, yada, yada, yada. You know, if we could get some few small wins in there, I think that would help us a long way with where we need to be in the city.
So I'm gonna throw this out. Yesterday in Western Growth, Sam from the county mentioned that the state is getting a ton of money. And part of what they're going to discuss in tomorrow's session is ways they're going to use that money. So if any of us have relationships with any of our legislators, we should contact them. And for Salt Lake County in particular, also contact them, because they're getting a lot of money. They still have a rec center planned for our city, close to where it was. And with this federal money, it might be an opportunity to get that to come sooner than later. And what Western Growth is asking of the legislators is that they fund the rest of the interchanges between I-15 and the 201. So if you have relationships, maybe reach out and let them know those are our needs.
Sounds good. Are we working with Jordan Valley Water Conservancy on the, some of these arterial changes? Can we use maybe some grant money from them, or get some sponsorship? Getting some things done, if we move them more water-wise?
You know, Jordan Valley mentioned in their presentation that if we'll go, if we'll adopt the water efficiency standards, they will provide a grant to us to help mitigate the change to more water conservation practices. We definitely wanna take advantage of that. You're right, Melissa. I wanna say it was 50,000 a year for three years, if I remember right.
Money's money.
Yes.
And it's nice to go water-wise. That's what I was telling Brian the other day, is like, we need to lead by example.
So at some point tonight, Kelvin, I'd like to discuss the city council's budget.
Anytime you wanna bring it up. So we talked about the parks, because that got brought up. Anybody have any questions more about parks or capital or those kind of things there?
I have a question about parks. And Brian, are you still on, Brian?
Yeah, he's still here.
He's just in the dark a little bit.
That's my lighting in my office. For years, and when I say years, maybe it's just the four years I've been on, but even before that, when I was on the Parks Committee, we were told that the parks budget got cut many times, and it's never gone back to what it is. So I was looking at the budget tonight, and I felt like there was a little bit of bump, but I'm wondering if that's just more a bump because of the, because of the cola. Brian, I don't know if you can speak for the parks right now, but I don't see a typical, hey, we need this added onto our budget this year. Usually I have a whole list of things from every department saying, I need a tractor, or I need this, or I need that. Are you guys, do you feel with parks that this is enough, or are we still shorthanded from what I've been told over the past six years?
Well, I'll be honest, we were trying to be frugal, but get, the main focus in parks this year was to get positions. And our two positions, full-time positions that were requested in this budget, that will be a big help, but it's gonna take a little bit, because we're growing every year. We're taking on additional acreage every year.
Right.
It's gonna take some time to catch up, but we're making, well, other than the cuts we had to do last year, but that's, Denise has done, and Corbin's done a great job in getting those positions reinstated with the seasonals. Now it's a workforce issue. We can't find seasonals.
Yeah. Why work when you get free money?
Yeah, exactly. But right now, we were focused on getting some of the full-time employees back that we lost back in 2008.
Right, that's what I was kinda referring to.
So there are two employees in there. That will be a great help. We'll be able to split some crews up and get more, we'll have two mow crews going if we got these two positions, two maintenance crews that'll be out mowing, hopefully. So that's kind of the gist behind it, get us back on track there, and then grow from there, try to grow each year from there.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're having that covered. I know it's difficult, because like you said, every department wants to be frugal, but every department needs something. So I wanna make sure that we're, we're hitting those needs. I know, I know there's some issues with, you know, maintenance on older, whether it's mowers or four-wheelers, whatever else you need, so I don't think you need to. four-wheelers, whatever else you need, so, um, I don't think you need to, go ahead.
Actually, the fleet, Parks Fleet is doing amazing, well, the city fleet, but Parks, more so, we have amazing equipment now. Uh, Denise and Ben and Corbin have been gracious to help us out, get the right equipment for the job, and it's, it's paying off. It's, we're not, our, our equipment's not in the shop more than it's out working. So that's, that's been great.
So our fleet side is wonderful. I'm not looking to solve your problems tonight, because there, it's gonna be problems to solve over a few years, but um, I'm willing to sit down with you and sit down with Denise and the, and the city staff and see what we can do to, you know, make a plan for the next five years to make sure that we're keeping up with the growth of the parks, uh, that, I, I mean, I'm, I'm positive that the West Side is gonna have ten new parks in the next five years, so we need to.
It's, it's growing. It's, it's definitely grown as we've all seen, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
And thank, thank Parks for me, Brian, please, because, uh, with, uh, performance measurements, they had data there, and that's really helpful for me when I'm looking at this budget, and they had theirs.
Great. I'll pass that on. Thanks, Councilmember Whitelock.
So Kayleen, if you don't mind, um, I just want to throw something out there just before you talk about the council budget. And actually, the public works, looking at parks, um, on page one forty-five, if you'll, you'll kind of look through their budget, and you see all the explanations of where all the money's going to. Um, this is like maybe nitpicky, but I'd just like to know, there's several pages through here where there's explanations on budgets. Uh, page ninety-six, um, there's three line items that don't have an explanation of why. I mean, it's fifteen hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, but it's, I'm just like, well, what is it going to? It's blank. So is it possible to get those blanks filled in? And it's not just, I mean, it's throughout the bullock in different spots, so.
It's typically the nominal amounts that tend to be like equipment and supplies. They just need some, some supplies. They just don't quite know what that might be yet, so. Um, and memberships, you know, typically that's like EDCU or a professional membership that supports the department. But I understand that, um, there are some blanks in here.
Yeah, I just, I mean, if we get asked, I want to be able to answer. I mean, just blanks aren't good, because it's, someone's gonna pick up on that and go, what is this for? What is it being spent on? So if it's possible to fill in a few more of those, just so those answers can be, we can answer those if we need to.
You can do that.
Thanks. Okay, so the council budget, do we want to talk about that next?
Sure, why not?
So.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate the work that is done in the council office on our behalf, but I'm concerned at the rate that we're growing that office. Um, prior to the change in form of government, it was basically Ms. Briggs that did pretty much everything that our council office does for us, plus more. And now we have two employees that are doing what she did, and we're being asked to allocate a couple hundred thousand dollars more for our office, when I feel like we haven't given it a chance to see, hey, how is our office really working? Because we're still figuring it out. So I'm, I'm a little bit confused, and I have to be honest, I'm frustrated that I had heard about, um, the software in a meeting, but in one of our meetings, I have not heard about a new position. So I really think that's something that should have been brought up to the whole council. Um, because I don't feel like that the leadership team has that authority to speak on our behalf. They, the, the leadership team is to direct the council staff and to run our meetings. But to me, that doesn't include deciding that we need additional personnel. I think that's a conversation that really should be had with at least a committee of the whole, if not in one of our regular meetings. So first, I want to express frustration. Second, I want to say I, I can't vote for another two hundred and thirty, I think is what it comes out, plus ongoing costs for the software. I think we need to have more data to show the actual need, and I understand that Alan's putting in a lot of hours. Um, but I'm wondering if there are other things that we can do to assist our council office? And maybe it's even training, um, that could assist. But I just want to know how, uh, the rest of our council members feel about this.
Well, I found out about the extra employee from a city staff member, not our staff, but city staff, um, kind of blindsided, a guy got blindsided by it, so I didn't know about it. Um, I've also been told throughout this year that if we get agenda management software, it's gonna free up a bunch of staff's time, and they'll have more to do. And I mean, that's just kind of been repeated over and over and over. So then the idea of a new employee was like, what? I thought we were gonna do this agenda management software. If that's gonna free up a bunch of time, then where are we looking at? I would rather just try the agenda management software and then see if we still need somebody else after that. Um, again, you're right. I mean, it's only been a year. We're still new. We're still trying to figure everything out, get organized, um, with some things, so. Yeah, definitely poor communication. It's kind of frustrating when decisions are made on my behalf when I haven't even been consulted. Um, some communication, especially on something like that. Well, hold on, let me finish.
Okay, and then I'll jump in.
Yeah, so, so, um, I'm not, I, I don't know enough about, I feel like the agenda management software has been at least spoken, you know, has been explained and spoken to us and why, and um, so that I feel a little more comfortable with, but I don't know, Kelvin, you and I, I mean, the first time I talked to you was the first time somebody said, you know, gave me more detail on another employee, but approving a budget with, like Kayleen said, you know, going up that, that much money is quite a bit of money with no information of the utilization and what they're gonna be doing and that type of a thing. So I, I'm kind of, I'm on the same page with Councilwoman Whitelock right here, because it's kind of flying blind a little bit.
And if you don't mind, I would like to ask Kelvin, because you're there and you hear everything, but I wonder what Councilmember Lamb and Councilmember Pack have, if we could hear from them first and then go to you. Is that okay?
I'll go first, if, if you're awake, Kelvin. You okay, Kelvin? Let me go.
I don't care.
So I've heard about the policy analyst from, geez, even, even from before when Alan and Ricky were together, that we would need one. I know it was Sandy City before we even changed the form of government. And within their office, they have this kind of same form. They have an office director, they have a policy analyst, and they had uh, the person who put together all the stuff like what Cindy does. So they had a three-person office. So to me, it's nothing out of the norm, and I, I, I don't know why the information's ever gotten to Kayleen or, or Melissa. I, I do know, Melissa, that you have heard about this policy analyst for a few months now, because you had some concerns a few months ago about who Alan was going to hire for this, if we did that, and.
Yeah, that's correct, but I was told by a city staff member. I didn't hear it from our staff.
Okay, I mean.
And then I had to go back.
I don't think this is something new that we just found out about last week. I think all of us have heard about a, a policy director. Now, whether or not we all agreed to get one, that's, that's a different, that's a different thing, because you're right. We haven't had a meeting where all of us were sat down and said, do we need a policy analyst director? Um, I, I kind of leave that up to the, the council director, whether that's Alan or whoever we hired to be the council director, that he says, this is what we need that would make us more efficient. Um, now, I, I keep hearing, well, we're new, we've only done this for a year. Um, but that doesn't mean we can't do it. I mean, this is something that Alan asked for, and we put in the budget. And will we, will we agree to it? Probably, who knows? Um, I, I know that, um, Councilman Worthing and I talked a few, a few weeks ago about if we could do both, and I was under the impression that with a budget that we have, that we could probably do one or the other. Um, so in that sense, uh, Councilman Worthing, like I kind of agree with you, adding two hundred thousand dollars for this one year probably a little bit too much for me as well, but, um, if I could add one or the other, whether it's policy analyst or whether it's the, the software, whichever will make things more efficient is gonna be good for our council moving forward, and not just for us that are in the council right now, but for future councils, uh, that will have the same setup as others these have. We have a very small council office that, uh, they work a lot of hours. They do a lot of good stuff for us. And I, I have to trust that we hired Alan and Cindy to do the job they're doing. I don't know, I don't know what Ms. Briggs did, um, for us. Sometimes I don't know if she did anything, but I shouldn't say that out loud, um, but, um, I, I, I do know right now that Cindy and Alan are working their tails off to get stuff for us done, and it sounds like they need more help, and so I'm willing to look into whether it's a policy analyst or whether it's software that will help us move forward and make sure that we're getting things done. So, uh, David, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, yes, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. I want to recognize there's pros and cons either way. My personal thought at this point, you know, which is always subject to change with additional information, is that we've been doing this for a year and a half in the new form of government, and if we're saying we need more time, well, then this is a whole nother year. That would be two and a half years. And I, I want to trust, but, but verify, and it seems like the agenda management software, if I'm understanding it correctly from my research, what I've gathered from the executive branch and from our, uh, council advisor, is that this would help city staff as well. So it's not just helping the council be more streamlined and efficient, but also all of our city staff would be a management agenda software. And it's my estimation, now granted, we, with COVID, we've been working outside of City Hall a lot, but I've stopped in on a fairly regular say hi to Cindy and Alan and just see what's going on. It just seems like that they're working very hard, and it's very difficult for them even to take a, a day off for a personal matter. And I too want to ensure we're using funds wisely. I think there's also a opportunity cost of running too lean, where some balls may be dropped, not for any reason of aptitude by Cindy and Alan, but just by sheer volume of work that would actually cost the city more money in the long run by not making a best-informed decision and not having adequate staff to run a department for a hundred and twenty thousand people. Granted, of course, this is the, the council office, not the, not the city office for, uh, you know, for every, everything else that we have employees for. But as I, I look at things, I, I think time to ponder, to research, to have a policy analyst, perhaps someone with some legal experience, to have agenda management software, i- it's worth running more efficiently. And I think at this point, the opportunity cost is better in terms of having that outlay of cost to be able to run the office in, in a better manner. At, at least that's my observation that Cindy and Alan are getting run ragged, and that this would really help out not only our office and the city staff as well. Thank you.
Kelvin, can I ask where the idea of the policy analyst came from? Was it Alan? Was it Zach? Was it you? I mean, where did it?
Uh, I think we've, what I was gonna say is we've had these discussions about a policy analyst or an attorney from the dais and from other places for well over seven or eight months. We've talked about this. I don't think this is, it, it honestly, if somebody says this is a surprise, um, because we've talked about, did we, do we need our own attorney? We've talked about, do we need, what was, what's better? We've, we've talked about those in this count, in, in council meeting.
Attorney, yes.
Well, but an attorney, policy analyst, policy analyst is cheaper than an attorney. Um, and most policy analysts, if they've got any legal background or better, or can, can do what we need to do. Here, here's, here's a couple of my thoughts. Can you put that back up today? Here's, here's a couple, here's a couple of my thoughts. Alan and Cindy, that, the fact that, the fact that we try to compare apples to oranges and say that, uh, that when, when Melanie was here, uh, the council ran with, just fine without her, uh, I, or with her, that's because there were different roles. And you also had Ricky that was, you know, as the city manager that was supporting, uh, the council, and a whole lot of other things that were different, with the council being separate. I think there are some separate things. I have heard council members say, uh, we want independent looks at things, yet when, what we, but Alan doesn't have a ti- time to do independent looks at things. Our, 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 our ordinances are terrible. Uh, we need some major rewrites and a whole bunch of ordinances. We don't have anybody to do those. Um, and, and, and even when we, unfortunately, even with the staff time, um, when there, when there are ordinances that need to be changed, it's, it's taken a long time, so. Uh, we talk about communications, um, you, you, you know, we can, well, I'll just take the hit and say, we didn't communicate well enough with you. We're sorry, and it's my fault. So I will leave it at that. Uh, the, the, you know, agenda management software probably saved the council office, probably someplace in the neighborhood of, uh, I'm, I'm gonna guess, Alan, what do you think, ten, ten hours? Twelve hours a week, fifteen hours a week? Depends on, it depends on how integrated the, um, agenda management software integrates with something like Laserfish. Um, it, it, it also depends on how well, um, if we buy, if we buy agenda management software and, uh, a, a, a divi- a division-like community development says, we're not gonna use it, we want you to do it a different way, uh, then it's not going to help the city at all. Uh, part of the process would be that if we bought agenda management, it would help planning commission, uh, with planning commission agendas, they would be transferred to the, to the council. Uh, other, other things would be entered in by staff, and the, the workflows would go smoother. Uh, that being said, if I had to trade off, um, agenda management software versus an employee, I would lean towards the employee and not the software, because we're gonna get more, we're gonna, we're gonna see more bank, we're, we're gonna see more visible results with another council member. I understand, I understand, uh, I, I understand the, uh, the reluctance, um, because we're going from, when we look at, uh, salaries and benefits, we're talking about going from four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty to six hundred thousand dollars now. We're talking about an increase of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But I will tell you that some of that is directly a result of the seven of us on the council, so. Um, you know, the, the, yeah, it's a thirty-two percent increase in budget. Uh, you know, if we wanna, we wanna not, if we wanna save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, drop the software. Uh, at some point in time, uh, at, at some point in time, we're gonna have to, I, I, I think at some point in time, we're gonna have to go there.
I would rather see, uh, see, do the software and see what that does for us and what kind of time that it saves before we bring somebody on. I guess I don't understand, in, in Kayleen and Calvin, I mean, you both have brought this up. I mean, I'm happy with Rob and his office and, you know, the service that they give us. I think it's fabulous. Um, so that, a lot of that, I'm not saying we don't need to have somebody in the future. I would just rather see the agenda management software put in a place, get people trained up, see what kind of time it saves, and then see, do we need a full-time person, or maybe we just need a part-time person? Um, you know, kind of feel that out, at least give it a good six months or so. You know, and yes, we're looking at a year, but we could always do a, a, a change and an amendment in the budget and try to bring someone on if it gets bad. I mean, the, the city staff has brought people on to help through the middle of the year, that type of thing, when they've needed it. I mean, I, I'd rather be more conservative on that side, um, but that's just my opinion. Um, so that's where I stand.
So Kelvin, here, here are two thoughts. I would like to hear from you more, what you think this policy analyst, what, what their role would be, what what exactly they would be doing for their eight-hour shift every Monday through Friday. And then I would like to hear, cause something you brought up is a really good point and concerning about the software. Because we can't dictate what administration and their staff does. So if the point is that this software is only going to really be beneficial if all of the other department heads buy into it, I think we've got some work to do before we purchase a software, which is collaboration, and see how they feel about it. Because the worst scenario is we ought to just buy a software program and then even if just two or three department heads are like, we're not doing this. We're not in, we're not, we're not seeing this one as being any useful to us. So I think we need to do a little more research on that to see if, if it is something the led, the executive side wants to use. But then also, if you'll explain to me a little more what you, what you feel the role of that policy analyst would be? Cause I don't see how that person can give us legal advice.
Real quick on the software, uh, Councilmember Whitelock. I know I've talked with Corbin about this before, cause he, he, he used it when he was at Sandy City. And I don't know if we want to use up too much time talking about software and how that's gonna do during this budget meeting, but I, I would love for all of us, if we had a chance to talk to Corbin, cause I know Sandy uses one right now and is very efficient. Am I correct, Corbin?
So, um, yeah, I just wanna, I'll chime in on the software issue a little bit. Sandy did use the Granicus product that led, called Legistar. They did use it for the council office for planning commission meetings. Uh, I think they were in process of adding Board of Adjustment meetings to that group when I left. I would, I would anticipate that if you got agenda management software, we would roll all, we would try to roll the public meetings onto the same platform like we did at Sandy, uh, council meetings and planning commission meetings. Uh, Scott's not here to comment on that from his perspective, but, um, my, kind of my basic assumption was that if you did buy that, it primarily benefits the council office, primarily benefits the council office processes. But we would try to use the same, uh, software package for, for sure, for planning commission meetings. Cause it's really, uh, the same benefit for that group.
From what I understand, it helps out in the efficiency of the council meetings. I know we've had a lot of non-efficient things happen with agendas and PDFs and all this stuff on there. This, from what I've seen from Sandy, when I looked at, it was very efficient and more organized than what we're currently doing with the way our council meetings are set up. So just, just my thought of what I've seen. But you're, you're right, Kayleen, the cost is, it's huge. So it's something we have to look at.
And I did speak with Brooke Christiansen, serving on Sandy's, uh, city council regarding Legistar. And, and it seems like it's working smoothly. Then again, I don't know if there are other options that, that could be used, but, but it seems, you know, anything that can streamline so that you can, uh, not have to look all over for information. I just have it housed in one area. It just seems like it would really make things more efficient for everyone involved. And, and that's good news to hear. Uh, thank you, Corbin, mentioning that, that, uh, if I understand you correctly, that you'd be saying that city staff would be encouraged, invited to, to use that so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, look, I don't have a dog in the fight on, uh, whether you choose to do the software or not, whether you choose to do a, you know, a council office staffing or not. Um, but if you do do the software, I would encourage us, we want to be efficient citywide. And so I would encourage us, if you buy the software, I would encourage us to use it with the planning commission as well. Yeah.
Alan, bring up the policy analyst.
I just put a link in the, in the chat for everybody that, that's a link to that, a demo. Quick little demo on that, so you guys can copy the link out and look at it at a separate time.
When you're talking about what a policy analyst would do, right now, Alan doesn't have enough time to perform the, any sort of basic independent analysis. Alan doesn't have any much, doesn't have time to research projects. So what I, what I'm, and, and when things come up, when things come up, uh, because the office is shorthanded, I, or, let me rephrase this. I don't think the office is shorthanded if you're willing to continue the way to do business, the way we've done business the last year. If, 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 if you're okay with, uh, maintaining the status quo, then maintain the status quo. If we want this office to be better to, so that we can, you know, we can look at issues and help work, recommend policy changes, um, work on procedural changes, um, help do research on things that have, um, happened in the city to try to get better perspectives so that, uh, the, you know, that we can, we can work on and be more proactive, uh, working on constituent and relation processes and those kind of things. Then we need the extra person. If you're okay with, if you're okay with, um, Alan working 50 hours a week, uh, not taking any days off. Okay, with Cindy working 40 hours a week, not taking any days off, um, doing, you know, putting slides, the, 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 you know, what you don't understand or, or don't see behind the scenes is the amount of time that it takes to put slides together, the amount of time it takes to put packets together. Um, i- if, if you want a little limit and say, fine, make the staff do all of that, then the staff will push back because they don't have the time either. So I, I don't know. Uh, like I said, I'd trade off the person for the software. Um, I think the council office needs the person. Um, I think the software buys efficiencies, um, for the council office. It'll buy some efficiencies, but it won't get you a, um, the efficiencies of a full-time employee. You know, it, uh, what's that, Alan? Alan, go ahead and make, go ahead and make a comment, Alan.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I just wanted to explain a couple of reasons why these were included in the budget, uh, from the council office. Number one, the policy analyst, uh, in the code, um, the council office is directed to provide an analysis of different policies that the council wants to consider. And so some of the essential duties is to perform constituent and relation services. Um, it monitors, they would monitor citizen requests for service. They would research projects for individual council members. The council as a whole and council staff as requested. They would, uh, provide direct staff support to council members in the form of research, special projects. Those kind of things. What, what I am doing currently is, just, just for example, for last week, um, we had the, I think, the budget, uh, subcommittee meeting on Tuesday night. I hosted an event here for Representative Owens Wednesday night. And then, um, Thursday night, we have the general plan committee. So those each were 12 to 14 hour days. I still come in at my, uh, my regular time. So that's, that's the rationale for the, the policy analyst. I'm also talking to probably two or three council members on a daily basis. I've received calls as early as 7:30 in the morning, which I'm fine with. And I've talked to many of you, uh, 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night, um, as needed. And I've, that's my choice. I, I choose to answer phones. I work for you. And if I'm awake, I'm happy to, uh, to do that. As far as the agenda management software, um, I provided, um, I, I think I, I, I sent a link with the three different providers. There's, uh, Prime Gov, which is what Salt Lake City uses. There's OnBase, which is what Provo uses. And then the Granicus Legistar, which is what Salt Lake County and Sandy use. And there, and there's a variety. There's some that just use Google, uh, Google Drive, uh, but they also have multiple, um, employees in the council office. One of the issues that we're running into right now is the interface between how we do the agendas and Laserfish, which is our, our repository for document storage. Um, Outlook, Microsoft has a limit on emails, cause we're sending email packets for signatures. And they have a limit of 25 megabytes, uh, per email. And Adobe Sign, which is what we use to do the digital signatures as opposed to the web signatures, um, that has a limit of 10 megabytes. When I was on the council and, and this council that's seated now, there's, there's been a desire to have access to more than just scanned images. And one of the issues we're running into now that Tangi brought, uh, to me a couple, I don't know, probably a month or two months ago, is that when we have a large file with embedded documents to provide you, uh, maps that you can zoom in on or graphs that you can zoom in on, look at the finer points on the maps and, and development projects. Um, when we embed that, Laserfish does not take the embedded doc. So we have to spend some time, uh, I, I don't wanna say reassembling the packet, but, but basically reassembling the packet so that when a resident does a grammar request or the media does a grammar request, um, that we know what documents we need to peel, pull to satisfy that. Both Prime Gov and Granicus interface directly with Laserfish. And my understanding is that if the council, as we're assembling packets, um, we can pull items from Laserfish and it stores items in Laserfish. So there's gonna be an efficiency just on that, that interface. We can also customize the agenda more. It's fully paperless. The other desire that the council has asked, again, going back at least one council to this current council, is having access to prior packets and prior documents. And this would do this, you could log in from a cloud with your browser. You enter in your credentials and you would be able to access prior packets. So if a, if a resident had a question and you knew, and you knew that it was spoken of April 14th, uh, you would be able to do that. Now, if I can change again quickly, just to the, so anyway, the, the agenda management would, would help solve that. If I can change back to the topic of the policy analyst, as I have looked at, um, as I've visited with other council office directors in other cities, when a staff packet comes to the council office, the council, the council, um, policy analysts in these other cities, they take that information and they create an analysis for the council. For example, Ogden City, uh, they were talking about ranked choice voting and they did an analysis of how it works. Uh, they stepped through processes and code. They itemized what bills, uh, the state had passed, the funding that was available. And that was provided as a, a support document to the request for council action. So in other words, there was a, a research document, and it ended up being 11 pages, if I remember correctly, that was, um, just discussing the whole ranked choice voting. It's additional independent information that's provided to the council office. So both of these items were put into the budget. And I, I recognize that it's a big ask. Um, but those are the things that I think can get us, the, the council to the next step, that you get more information to make the decisions.
So Alan, can I ask a question? If you had to choose, which would you prefer?
If I had to choose, I would prefer the person over the software.
Okay.
But I prefer both.
Okay. I guess another question I have, and I mean, maybe we, we probably should move on from this cause we do have other staff members here that we could get some answers from and talk to them. Cause I'd like to get that, some of their feedback as well on the budget. Um, but, um, I guess there's a concern of why are you running Planning Commission's meeting?
I'm not running Planning Commission's meeting.
But you just said that you're, you did their meeting, so you have a 12 to 14 hour day.
No, the General Plan Committee, which is a council.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Plan, Planning Commission. Okay. So maybe we need to look within ourselves and run our own meetings. I mean, like with the Budget Committee, I mean, I'm happy to go ahead and, and get that done. And so you don't need to extend your hours during the day and I can write a, up a, I can write up a summary and send it out to council.
Well, part of, yeah, and I understand that and I appreciate that. Part of, part of my job is knowing what's doing, so what's going on. So I don't, I don't mind participating in those meetings. Councilmember Whitelock does attend the General Plan Committee as an observer. Um, you realize that the council are, um, ex-official, non-voting members of their committees that they, they represent on. So, you know, that's, that's part of what I feel is in my job description is to do those tasks. And I did email, I, I think, I think all of you, I hope, seen it, but I, I did email out all the job descriptions for the policy analyst, for, um, the council office clerk. Um, I think you all have a copy of the council office director's job duties from last year. Um, so those have all been, uh, emailed to you previously as far as what they would do. So anyway, if I had to choose one or the other, I would choose the person. And then I would just put the agenda management on for next year. Um, if both of these are funded this year, then my intent, unless directed otherwise, would be to not include any expansion requests next year.
Okay. Um, can I ask a question or are we, are we still, does anybody else have any more questions on the council?
This is, this is open discussion.
Well, I just, if, we're not done with the council budget, if anybody else has any questions on it, I want to continue that, what, those, but if not, I'd like to move on to something else. Okay, hearing done. Chief Wallentine saying, um, I see you, I see you on your camera there. Um, can I ask you about your budget and your feelings, um, of what was filled in on your budget? If there's anything else you need that we can help with, how is your staff feeling? You're muted. There you go.
Well, yeah, I was muted, cause I was chuckling, cause that, that is, uh, I get asked loaded questions all day and I've been meetings all day, but that's the most loaded question I've had all day.
Well, you know, I, I asked, I asked Derek this earlier on a phone call, so I already got my answers out of him. I just didn't have a chance to talk to you. And, and in all fairness, Chad asked Brian, so it's your turn.
Yeah, I, the, uh, I am a, I am a great realist and, and I appreciate very much the hard work, perhaps more than most police chiefs of the community development folks. Because I realize that, that what those folks are doing today is building the foundation for improving the services that my folks will be able to offer in the future, as well as the job satisfaction for my officers in the, in the future. The, uh, clearly, there's been a lot of, a lot of turmoil and upheaval in public safety in the last year. So when you ask how our officers are, are feeling and, and doing, uh, that is a, a very loaded question. Um, I was at a, a board meeting, I'm, I'm the president of the Chiefs of Police Association. We had a, a board meeting today and had, uh, a very robust discussion um, about, you know, compensation and that, that is, I think, a, a hot topic. Um, I do feel it, uh, I feel that Denise and, and Corbin, working with, with me, have done a very good job of putting together what I think is a, given the, the limitations we have and understanding what they are, a very reasonable compensation plan. And we, we still have some nuances to work out in terms of career ladder and so forth. But the, the real, uh, warm discussion in our board meeting today and a topic that hap- comes up almost every board meeting is what are we doing to deal with the mental health issues? Is what are we doing to deal with the mental health issues of our first responders? And. If you have not seen the. The article that was published this month by Chief Maxfield in Firehouse Magazine. And it's a great article. Chief, you should know, we've sent that out now to all the police chiefs. Once in a while, we do like to acknowledge that the fire service does things better than us. The most, the most, some things, okay, some things. They save foundations very, very well. They've never had a cement foundation burn to the ground. I knew that would get him to turn his camera.
Time to bite my lip, but.
I know.
Yeah, but if you bite your lip, you're going to have to call the EMT, so don't do that.
That's right.
The thing I feel most, most, most powerfully about Councilmember Worthing is really one of the smaller items in my budget. And that's the $30,000 line item for mental health services for our officers. I could, literally, I could probably speak for an hour and I'm confident that everyone would be convinced of the, of the need. But I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's the most direct answer I can give you. Officers are tired, officers are frustrated, officers don't feel the support that they did. Even, even a year ago from the community. And the nation, I think, is tired of the division. You all see it in the newspapers on Sunday, read, I read the New York Times every Sunday, all the way through. And I, I see stories about civility and discourse and dialogue. My cops live the discourses about civility and kindness every day. So that's, there you have, that's what I feel strongly about. I'm happy to answer any more specific questions, but if you give me an open ended question like that, Councilmember Worthing, you're going to get an answer.
Well, it's the same kind of answer I got from Derek, so it's good. I think Brian gave us the same kind of answer too. On the mental health services, the 30,000, is, I mean, is that, are we allocating enough there? I mean, we don't know your budget like you do, is that going to cover what is needed?
Well, we have a couple of, we've got a couple of drafts ready, assuming the budget's approved. We'll send out RFPs to some entities that we know are well qualified. To provide first responder services that are working with other Utah police departments that have a good reputation. We did that right before the pandemic and had looked at a provider that had a proposal in the neighborhood of about 32, $35,000. So I do think that it's a, it's a fair number. And I have some flexibility in a couple of other areas in my budget. So I, I think that it is, I think it's an adequate number.
Okay.
So Chief, I have a couple of questions. One comes out of the budget book and it talks about you'll hold three recruiting events in underrepresented communities. So have you identified those communities in our city? What's that going to look like and how are you going about that?
Sure. What that, what that will look like, I think, will be largely in partnership with some of the institutions in the community, such as Salt Lake Community College. We're even diving down into our high schools, Councilmember Whitelock, we're going to be a little bit holistic about that. I think, I don't know if Mr. Lee has shared with you previously. What we do in our organization with the developing and implementing an outward mindset training program. But just, today is great if you ask that question. I had a meeting earlier with some folks that are going to help us integrate that into our, our high school. So we'll be selecting some young influencers, they call them nowadays, or thought leaders, I call them. In our high school communities, teaming them with police officers in a 16 hour education program. To help them develop great critical thinking skills in relationships, outward mindset. From that, we'll build some partnerships into just grabbing on and recruiting. We have approached a couple of churches and we also have approached and already obtained a commitment from the NAACP to help us here. And obviously, Councilmember, we recruit beyond the borders of West Jordan, right? That's, that's a necessity. But that's, that's what it looks like. It also, I'm going to tell you something, I probably, I probably shouldn't. I don't drive into Willa County much anymore. We've hired seven people from Tooele County Sheriff, from Tooele Police Department. Since I became chief, we've got their very best. And there's a multicultural event out at Tooele County Schools this weekend. And one of our Latino officers has been asked to come and participate. And I told him today, yeah, you can go, you can go in uniform, but only if you stuff your pocketful of recruiting brochures.
But Tooele County hasn't put a warrant out for your arrest, huh, Chief?
Well, the brother, the chief of police out there works for our police department. But I, and I'll say, I'll encourage all of you. Robert Alred, who is on with us tonight, took this challenge from me and he approached a neighbor now that is in our recruiting process. It's real simple, two questions. What do you know about the West Jordan Police Department? Would you like to know more? Our chief of police will buy you lunch if you'll sit down and have a serious conversation about a career in law enforcement.
So that discussion makes me wonder if maybe we want to. Consider doing something maybe with all of the police chiefs in Jordan District. And, and work with the Jordan Applied Technology Center, like they have the fire. They have a fire group, I don't remember what they do, they learn to put out fires and stuff. But that, I think, is being a good recruiting tool for fire. So maybe, maybe that's something we should consider looking at. Doing, pairing something with the district.
Yeah, they do, the JATC, the Jordan Applied Technology Center has a law enforcement program. Criminal justice program. Brandon Palmer, who actually is a former West Jordan officer, is the one who runs that. And we just recently participated in what they call their Day in the Life activity for law enforcement. Brandon always reaches out to us here at West Jordan to help provide some mentors participating in those activities and others. And that was just, I'm looking at my calendar, I'm not sure the exact date. But, but that happened in late April, well, really at the end of the semester. So we do have, we do have some connections there with JATC. We don't really want to give a leg up to other chiefs in the Jordan School District.
Okay.
Well, we don't.
No, that makes sense, yeah, yeah. So I'm sorry, I don't remember this, you said seven people from, seven officers from Tooele Sheriff's Department since you started. What was that, what year did you start?
Either in 2018, late 2018. Either from the sheriff's office or from Tooele City Police Department. And I'll, and I'll tell you why, it's not, it's not a hard thing to figure out. We hired one young man, actually hired a sergeant. Who came to workforce, took a bit of a cut down in position, but hired a sergeant. Who came here and he went to a couple of these friends and said, this is a better place to be. Tooele County is unfortunately for them, right now, one of the few places that we can go recruit really good lateral officers. And, and they can get a one or a $2 an hour pay raise. And depending on where they live, they live within our, our vehicle catchment area. So they live within the area that they can drive a police vehicle home for commuting purposes. And it's just been word of mouth. We, we've got this little cadre of really, really fine officers. And there's a couple others that we're talking to this coming Friday.
I'm asking because I have a friend in the Tooele Sheriff's Office. And she, I've been trying to get her to come over here because she lives here in West Jordan. So I'm going to tell her about the lunch deal, see if I can set you up.
Yeah, I'm not real, you know, I taught, I taught the sheriff out there in the police academy many years ago, he's a great student. He no longer considers me his friend, but yeah, what can I say? We'll, we'll recruit from anybody that's got good people.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Thanks, Chief.
You bet, are there any other questions that I can answer for you?
I want to, I want to retrograde for just 30 seconds. We have to adopt a tentative budget next week. Denise is shaking her head. If, if, I want to go back to the council budget and get a straw poll. So we can, so that we can decide what we need to modify on the council budget. So. I, I'm, I'm just trying to get the five perspectives here. On, and, and kind of take a, which, which direction we want to go with the five. So I'm just, I'm going to go around my Zoom screen. And just call on everybody and I'm going to start, Kayleen, where are you at?
Wait, what if you, I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that, I apologize. But what if you just started with, do you support the funding, the agenda management software?
So, so let's, let's do this as a bifurcated process, we'll go around. And, and the first one is, let's do agenda management software. And just tell me yes or no, whether you, and this will give us a good perspective of where we're at with agenda management. So Kayleen, yes or no agenda management?
I think a yes.
I see a no there, so.
No, I just can't answer these, you want a yes or no on both of these things, Kelvin? And I don't feel like I have gotten an answer on my policy analyst to know what that person's really going to do. And Alan said, what did Alan say, if he could only get one, he wanted.
Policy.
Person.
Person, so I guess then I'm going to say, I can't give you a yes or no for both. So I'm going to say, if we, if we're going to choose one and Alan wants the policy analysis. Person, then I will go with that. And then give it six months, see how the workload is. I just can't say yes to both right now.
So Kayleen, I hear yes to a person, no to agenda management.
Yeah.
The person is kind of a yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, Melissa?
Same.
Chad?
What's the person, let's do the.
Real quick, Alan, and I forgot to ask you this, Alan, is the 130,000 agenda management fee, is that a yearly fee or how does that work?
No, that is, that is a one time purchase.
Then is there, is there a fee that, I mean, this is obviously a program, so is there a fee that continues years after?
Yes, and depending on the provider, it could be upwards of 30,000 a year. It could be less, I mean, there's, there's three main providers, probably more than three, but those are the three that I mentioned earlier, the three that I looked at. The most expensive would be the 30,000 a year roughly.
So, so Kelvin, my answer is I think we need both, but I'm not willing to do both this year. And I talked to Councilmember Worthing about this a few weeks ago, for me, it was one or the other and I would choose the policy analyst.
Councilmember Pack?
Did we lose him?
David, are you there? Me, I'd vote for both.
Might be doing laundry.
But it, it looks, it looks based on at least the. Consent, the reason, the semi consensus here. So Denise, it looks like as we modify the budget. We probably drop the stuff or the agenda management and keep the person, that sounds like where we're, where we're the most in consensus. So, do I see kind of a thumbs up from everybody that that's kind of where you want to go? All right, well, that's, just so that we can fix the budget document, know where we're at.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I was going to come back to it.
Because I knew that, I knew that's an adjustment. So I have one, I actually have two things, three things, I take that back. Denise, the increase in supplies to the recorder's office that went from like 6 to 16K. Is that because of the passport office?
Yes, absolutely, it's the postage for the passport office.
Okay. There were a couple of, I will just tell you, there were a couple other supplies out there that seemed a little have a blip with anomaly. And I can't remember those right off the top of my head. I don't think I'm going to worry about it, but we probably ought to, at some point in time, we ought to adopt a policy of, for supplies budgets. Oh, the mayor's bringing cookies.
Well, the in-person people, they get them.
And you guys lost out, you lost out on these nice soft chocolate chip cookies.
You know where I live. So I'm going home.
But something that hit my mind when we were talking, when I saw the supplies budget, like I said, for the few thousand dollars, I'm not going to care this year. But what hit me is, what I'm wondering is, should we adopt a policy that says for future years? As kind of a budgeting policy that we do supplies plus. You know, you did last year plus 2%. Last year plus 3%, last year plus. And use that as the baseline to guide for supplies. You know, actual expenditures plus a percentage or something, just as a standard policy. And then if there's really a need for something that we, that we look at that, but that's not, that's not, I, I, I'm not going to get into the weeds on that.
Just FYI, in the general fund alone, I pulled up real quickly. Department supplies, equipment maintenance supplies, you know, the supplies, right? And it dropped from 1.662 million in 2021's budget to 1.39 million in 2022. So there was still a substantial decrease.
Good, so my other two comments, consolidated fee schedule. And I'm trying to get my mouse over there and it doesn't want to cooperate. You know, it's this, it's these great surfaces that we own, I'm throwing all right under the bus again.
I know, I'm like, Robert, buy the laptops.
Specifically, I'm looking at the line item under item number three, the alcohol licensing. Can we, there's, there's a myriad of licenses and all this other nonsense in the alcohol code. And we're going to rewrite the alcohol ordinance and it's going to come back to the council soon. What I'm wondering is, is if we can't consolidate this and we have the one time application fee of 315. The $1,000 bond that will probably be in the new ordinance and helps fix the old one in the meantime. And then just says annual alcohol, they're all the same amount, right?
I just looked at it, I'm like, why did we do it that way?
You know, it's the, just call it the annual alcohol license renewal fee. And it doesn't matter which license it is and it's the 340 bucks.
I can absolutely do that, not, we are so happy to make this document less.
You know, that's, that's one of those that, you know, goes back to me using the liberal use of the delete key. But I think it makes it simpler.
Yeah.
And then, then if our friends up on the Capitol Hill decide to add another license to it. When we amend the ordinance, we don't have to amend the consolidated fee schedule and all of that. You know, all the domino effect from that. So that was just one that my thought is that if we clean that one up, that would, that would make that. That would make that really easy. I, I just see a lot of green on the sexually oriented business, I wonder how we could simplify that one too. But other than that, those are, those were my comments. And then my last comment that will probably generate a substantial amount of discussion. Where are we at with the Community Arts Center?
So this is what we, where we are as far as, as I know so far, and Corbin can chime in after this. We have programmed in $300,000 to go to the capital improvement fund. The reason we did that isn't because we believe that we should be subsidizing the construction of the Community Arts Center. As much as we need to program into the budget, an ongoing expense for the operations of the arts center going forward. We're estimating it'll be about $300,000 and we estimate that bill to happen in 2025. Well, or it to be done and operating by 2025. We have the $5.7 million, we have the word of Salt Lake County, we have an obligation of $2. the word of Salt Lake County, um, we had an obligation of $2 million to add to that. But that changed once COVID hit and their funding reduced. They have promised that we would be, um, we'd see that funding back, so we're a little concerned about moving forward with it until we can see if we can get some of that county money, we're afraid if we fund it and start constructing it, they'll go, oh, good, West Jordan's got it taken care of, now let's move on to Harriman. Or wherever else, right? Um, so that, that's kind of where we are, is we have everything ready to pull the trigger. Um, it's up to council if, you know, if they want to start building, but we have programmed into our ongoing long-term plan, um, an ongoing revenue stream to operate the community arts center.
You said it's up to the council to get, to get it going, but I feel like we've been waiting for city staff to kind of give us more information, I, I think the council's ready to move forward, but we've kind of been told not yet.
Well, I guess it's whether the council wants to give up on the Salt Lake County money or not.
Oh, I, I don't, I think you're doing the smart thing. I mean, don't spend, don't go doing something without knowing we've got it funded. It's not, it's not completely funded without that money, then let's hold off and wait, or keep putting money away till we have, can take care of it on our own, or get some sponsors, because quite honestly, building right now, bad idea. Really bad idea, the costs are outrageous.
You think it's going to be cheaper a year from now?
Something's got to break somewhere, right now they're limiting builders.
Costs aren't going to go down next year.
They can have for lumber.
I'm just saying your costs aren't going to go down next year, it's going to either stay the same or be more.
Well, this, this, we're putting in, we have, uh, we have this money that was already set aside, that's still sitting there. This lets us put a little bit of ongoing money toward that, toward that construction account every year. But because it's ongoing money, when the county comes in with their $2 million, we can build and operate immediately because we plugged into the budget an ongoing amount that will, on the ongoing operations on end of the building. If the county, if we wait and wait on the county, every year we take some of this ongoing money and just add to that construction account. Um, you know, eventually, uh, we'll build it, we will have the funds to be able to build it on our own without the county. But we don't want to jump the gun and do the, the county promised $2 million, I don't want to let them off the hook. I want them to, uh, participate and fund and be a part of this county, community art center. So even though we could rearrange things and fund the whole amount this year, uh, we're not recommending that, we are recommending keeping the amount we already had there, adding to it with an amount that we think will be needed for the ongoing basis, so it's already plugged into our budget, so the moment it's funded, it can operate with no question at all.
Yeah, and the one thing I will throw out there is, you know, you're just talking operation, I've heard things thrown out there about having the arts council operate the building, I don't want this, I want this to stay with the city no matter what. Um, I don't want to, I don't want an outside entity running or, um, managing this art center.
That's what this money does, we, we battered around those ideas, you know, leasing it to the arts community, cultural arts society, um, having, having them operate it, because it would keep the city's general fund operation costs down if we did something like that, but you'd give up control.
That's what I worry about.
Um, this plan, this plan with some ongoing money going into this budget every year allows for the city to own and operate the building without a new impact to the budget when the building opens.
I, I just know my thought is, is that if we're talking about 2025, I think we're too, I think we're being too slow.
Um, we might be, frankly, the moment the county comes through with their 2 million grant that they previously promised, we'll construct, we can, you know, pull the trigger. Uh, that might be, that might be faster, I certainly hope it's faster than 2025, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the majority of us like to see it started at least by next year.
Alright, yeah, I think that I, I, I heard a whisper, uh, from somebody in the room, says, or this year, so I, I, I'm, I'm, it may have been me. Uh, I, 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 I think I'd like to, I'd like to see the, the, the ground broken this year sometimes, so I think if, I mean, I think we, we've got an uphill task to get but, you know, as, as, as that money's becoming loose, as freeing up, COVID restrictions are going away, TRCC money, all those kind of things, we should be able to, I, I'm, I'm hoping that we can help use our influence so that we can actually get something in the, in the city and not be shunned and have Taylorsville and Draper and everybody else and their dog get, uh, money from the county and we don't, so, uh, somehow, so hopefully we can uh, hopefully, I see the mayor's head nodding on that, so hopefully we can, we can work with, with the county to, to get some of that money shifted. And hopefully, you know, what I, what, you know, my, my thought is, is as long as we're we got that on the horizon and we've, we've got this money now in this budget program for ongoing expenses, let's, let's work with Salt Lake County as hard as we can get to, you know, to, to, to get that tax money so we can get the ground broken soon.
Well, and the county, the county according to Sam is getting a pretty good amount of money also. I think we call it ARPA or something, Denise probably knows what the acronym is.
ARPA.
The A R, A R P A.
Yeah, ARPA, and so, and that is one-time expense money, so this is a good opportunity to remind them of what they promised.
ARPA's got some restrictions on it with counties, but we, but I, it's just something that hopefully we can, we can work with, uh, we can work with the county, use some ARPA, uh, work with the county, get the TRCC zap money, whatever, and get that commitment back to West Jordan City, so we, I mean, I just, I think with the, the council has made promises to residents for a long, on things for a long time and some point in time, I think we got to keep those, and this is one of them. So, anyway, that's my thought, uh, I'm, that, those were my issues with the budget, anybody got any other uh, items or discussions that you want to, oh, I, I have one, one more, can I, can I just throw out the community, the community engagement? Um, this is my thought, and, 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 and I don't know how we do this in the budget Denise, so this is, you can, you can help us with this. We know that there, there's, that there's a request to add an additional events planner. And I'm okay with that. I, 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 uh, there, there were two, there were two things that stuck in them, in my mind, is that the revenue from the events was about half of the events budget. Um, and, and I thought we had been told before that with sponsors and some of those other things that we covered more of that. Um, the other one is that this, this is, this goes more legislative intent, so if the rest of the council agrees. Um, when, when you look at the budget book, it talks about dollar per activity and cost per person and a couple other things. There are some events that the city ought to have, um, that may cost money that I don't think it, I care the cost per person. I'm talking about, um, so when we talk about performance measures, those performance measures generally apply, but I'd like an asterisk that says, except for certain events. Uh-huh, and, and the events that I'm talking about in specific are Veterans Day, Memorial Day, West Jordan Police Day, and West Jordan Firefighters Day. I think that the, the, the city, we designated, we designated two of those days on our calendar as permanent recognition days. The city ought to do something, whether that's, uh, you know, a, a flag ceremony for fallen officers, a, a flagpole, I don't care, but I think that for me, on the legislative intent, that there, that they can, one of the conditions of approving an additional uh, employee for events is that the small events like Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and the two, the two days that we honor public safety, they do not get left by the wayside and that we hold an event, uh, we do something for those. Um, because I think those are important for the city. And if it costs 10K to sponsor those, let's put 10K at it, whatever it is, so that we can do those and not worry about, uh, co, uh, revenue to participant ratio or any of those other kind of things for those four or five small events, if that makes sense, that's my, that was my thought on the um, community engagement, community events budget.
And I think you'll be happy to see that on page 74, we added $10,000 extra to that budget in addition to what we had originally had in there for the small community events, so we, when you're like, let's throw 10K at it, we already did that for you, so.
Okay, so that's what that, that's what that 10K was for.
It was.
Okay, as long as it's earmarked and we all know that, then I'm okay.
So that's the small community event.
Okay, so I have a question, if we, if, if in the council budget, we are going to nix the software for now, I'm wondering if we couldn't take $5,000 and maybe 10,000 and bump up, uh, the police department's mental health to 35 to 40,000, because what I heard Chief Valentine say is, when he put out an RFP last time, it came back at 32, 30, I don't remember what he said, 32 to 34, I think, 35, 32 to 35, so I would hate, I would hate him to have to go through and skim some money off somewhere else when we have money now that we could reallocate there.
We actually have plenty to cover that, um, so he's got mental health money in two different places. One is in his benefits line, um, he has $5 per month per employee, so $60 per month per employee in his department that is under the benefits line that we could redirect to help cover the cost of mental health. And then we have the additional 30,000, so he should have plenty of money in there. He should have close to 40.
I, I don't see an option, raise my hand, so. I, here's my hand raised, I don't see it on the screen. Um, we have the option, and, and I'm just, tomorrow morning, uh, Corbin and I'll discuss this. We have the option to, to take the police department out of the general um, employee assistance program, which is something I've actually been asking to do almost since the day I arrived here. And Denise is facilitating that that is now contractually possible. And so that will, if, if we can accomplish that, and I just, I think I just heard Denise say we can.
Absolutely, 100%.
That will free up sufficient money for us. So thank you very much for the consideration, but I, I think that there is money available to fill, if there's a gap, to fill that gap.
Okay.
And I can do the transfer out of the benefits line into his professional technical services, so it's super clear um, that there's, um, at least 37,500 in there, there might be 39. But it's pretty, it's, it'll be close. And if he needs more, we absolutely can take care of that with a budget amendment first thing in the year. There is absolutely no reason that we can't take care of this need, it's important.
There, there might be a need in fire, um, that's something that, uh, Chief Maxfield and I were talking about earlier, so if that is a need, that might be a good place to put that money, but he's, he's checking into that, so I don't want to jump the gun and get into detail on that right now, but once I hear back from him, we can discuss it next Wednesday during our council meeting if necessary.
Alright, so my, my one thing, there's a few things, but we don't have time tonight, um. So Corbin, can you give us a little bit more information, we've talked about adding someone to our council staff, so I look at the mayor's office. Tell us a little bit more about these emergency and communication outreach manager. Who, is that someone that's already in our staff, or is it someone that you're going to hire, how does that work?
Good question, thank you for asking, um. Jared Smith, our risk manager departed to go become the risk manager for all of Salt Lake County about two months ago. Um, we have been in the process of trying to hire a new risk manager. Um, Jared, because of his background, he had been previously an emergency manager in addition to an assistant risk manager before coming to West Jordan. Because of that background, we asked him to wear two hats while here in West Jordan, we asked him to be the emergency manager and the risk manager. What, what we've been finding is frankly, for the amount we were paying Jared, we're having a hard time finding a qualified risk manager, let alone someone who can be a risk manager and an emergency manager for us. Um, a city of our size and with our, our, the, the complexity of issues we have, the risks and hazards we have, we need a full-time emergency manager. Um, separate from risk management. That would be a position that would, um, help us do emergency management drills and exercises, would operate the EOC, would coordinate with other cities and the county EOC, and the state program, et cetera. Um, so emergency management would be 60%, 70% of this, 60% of this job. We called it, uh, community outreach and emergency manager because we hope the other 30% or 40% of the job would be operating, um, coordinating a, the national night out against crime. The, um, neighborhood watch programs. Um, outreach and follow-up with, uh, volunteers and volunteer coordination. Um, follow-up and outreach and, uh, exercises for people in our community who have been cert, certified in the past. Uh, all those kinds of things, and because it's, so because it's a little more than just emergency management alone, we, we plugged it in organizationally in the mayor's office. But that's, that's the intent of that position.
So is it two people or one, it sounds like it should be two separate jobs.
Now, risk management is a different job, that's not being done away with, they're adding this one.
Risk, the risk manager position is still exists, it's in Rob's budget in the city attorney office, it's still there and, uh, it's funded. In this proposed budget, uh, in last year when we did cuts, we cut, um, the risk management program to include only a part-time assistant. That's proved to be problematic, one of the things we have, uh, proposed in this budget is to restore the restore the funding, so there's a risk manager and a full-time administrative assistant to support the risk manager. Those two positions would be in the city attorney's office, this emergency manager.
The risk management fund.
Yeah, in the risk management fund, but organizationally under the city attorney's office.
Yes.
Um, this emergency manager position would be in administration.
And so the reason I bring that up is, you, you know, under, under Bricky and when you were our assistant city manager, there were the two of you working in tandem, and you both did a great job together, and, you know, I've heard you know, whether it's through the grapevine or whatever, that, you know, that we, we as a city might be putting too much workload on you, so my concern is, are we in need of a, assistance city manager to help you? And would that be more of a, a position that would make sense than this position?
Thank you for asking, um.
I, I, I'm just curious because you took on the workload of Ricky when he left and, um, I'm just worried that, you know, the, the great job that you two did before, I'd like to see that continuing.
Um, perhaps someday, I'm not asking for it now. Um, no doubt, I feel burnt out at, at moments and, uh, working very hard, um. But to me, the, um, the workload on me is easier if our departments are, um, have the staffing they need and the support they need, and the programs are working well throughout the departments.
I'm just saying, does it make more sense to have an assistant city manager to help you than this position? Or do you feel like this position is more important at this time?
I think having a full-time emergency manager is important. We, we need it, frankly, we haven't had an emergency management exercise since I've been here, Jared was doing his very best, but he was, he had more on his plate than he could handle just with risk management. Um, where I feel like we're lacking someday, and I will, I will in a future budget, request, uh, analysis support. There is a lot of study, a lot of analysis that isn't happening that I would like to have happen. Um, we do have in this budget, a part-time budget analyst in the administrative services department. I'm, to be, to be honest, I'm super excited about this part-time position in admin services because um, it can, um, perform some of that analysis, it can relieve some of the, uh, more tedious aspect of preparing the budget that falls on Denise currently. um, it can, um, perform some of that analysis. It can relieve some of the, uh, more tedious aspect of preparing the budget that falls on Denise currently. And that position can support Denise and Melena on things like annually doing market studies of all of our uh, positions and comparing how, how do we compare in pay to other cities? Right now, we only do that, um, once every three or four or five years. That's not acceptable to me. We need to every year see how our pay ranges are comparing with other cities for every position in the city so that we don't get out of alignment over a three or four or five-year period. That allows us to make smaller incremental adjustments over time rather than, uh, find out, whoa, over three years, suddenly everyone else is paying building inspectors a lot more than we're paying building inspectors. I want to see those kinds of things regularly. So, um, anyways, Chad, Councilman Lamb, thank you for your concern. Uh, I am worried about it, but I don't think it's the biggest need in the city right now. Uh, and, um, when, when I feel like we need that position, we'll, uh, we'll ask for it in the budget process.
Thank you. Then my last thing, then I'm done for tonight is I'm still concerned that we're moving money from our water and sewer and storm drain to cover our, our budget. Um, you know, when I hear that we balanced our budget, I'm like, well, we didn't because we had to move dollars from the other funds to balance it. Um, and I'll bring that up more next week as we, as we have our council meeting, because I don't think this is the right place to do that. But I, as I looked at the six-year plan, um, we are going to be moving over $15 million from those funds to cover our budget. Um, does that make sense when we're asking people to pay more for water and for, uh, those services? I don't think so. And I'm speaking as a citizen myself when I say that because, um, under, before I was on the city council, I was told that every dollar water goes to support the water fund, whether that's paying for water or whether that's paying for infrastructure. And now after raising water rates and raising water costs, even though we made some changes in October, uh, we're still using those dollars now to help balance the budget. So it'll be something that I kind of bring up in the next meeting, but I just wanted to let you guys be aware. I've talked to a few of you about it already. And last year I was, um, not very vocal, but I was okay with doing it last year because of COVID. But as you look at the budgets, uh, we actually didn't need that money to move over to cover our, our costs last year. After all, as you look at the, the overage that we have for this year. So, uh, just my thoughts on moving money from those funds to cover our budget. Thank you.
Okay. So as we're like five minutes until the end of this meeting, um, I'm going to be making the following changes, right? So I'm going to um, remove agenda management software. And because that is one-time money, I'll be transferring that to the capital projects fund to continue to, um, balance this budget. And then I'm going to be adding the utility locator to the water fund. And those are the only two changes that I'm making. Is that correct?
Consolidated fee schedule?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, the consolidated fee schedule. Thank you. There are a few like things that Councilman White Lock or Councilwoman White Lock found for me that were some spelling errors or typing errors or something, but um, nothing major, like tis was its. So, um, we'll make those small changes, uh, but otherwise, um.
And then if you could fill in some of the blanks, just so, if, if we get asked questions, we can answer those.
Okay. I will do my best to fill in the blanks.
I mean, you could just send me, send me the word documents and tell me what to do. I'll do, I'll do it for you. Call your secretary.
It's easy. Um, and then when would you like to do the five-year plan modeling, um, on a pro- possible property tax policy or increase?
So we'll have another discussion.
Would you like to do that in your work session before your next meeting or what would you like to accomplish? And what, what meetings would you like now that it feels like you've kind of gone through the budget and feel like your concerns or questions are answered? Do we need all of the workshops that are currently scheduled and?
Well, I want to point out that one of our, um, council members that is usually pretty vocal on the budget is not with us tonight. So we need to ensure that plenty of time is allowed for those that aren't here to give their opinion. And what your question is, I think is a good workshop thing and makes sense.
So maybe the work session on the 26th, um, because we'll have maybe the other two council members attending that we listen to their comments on the budget. And if there is additional time that we can go over the five-year modeling. And if not, we can push that on to the ninth. Does that sound like a good plan for you? Okay. Kelvin, our chair green.
I, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at this and looking at the, it, it, it is clear, it is clear that this budget, um, it is clear, uh, that this budget is not as difficult as it was last year. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, I, I think that between the work sessions on May 26th and June 9th, uh, I think we'll be able to cover almost everything that you're talking about with feedback from the other two council members and a five-year plan on tax policy. I, I, I think in that three hours, I think we should be able to knock that out. Don't you?
I agree.
So I, I'm, I'm thinking we probably, I think tonight, the, here's my thought. Tonight was extremely beneficial. I'm glad we did it. It got, it got, uh, I think the majority of the, uh, questions for the budget out of the way. Uh, so that the next sessions will be, uh, fairly simple. Um, what I will do is probably, well, I mean, I don't know if I can get it done tonight. I got another, yeah, maybe I'll just get it done tonight and not worry about it. I've got a, I've got an appellate brief that's due here Friday. Um, but I will send an email out to everybody just, um, semi-giving a synopsis of what we talked about. And particularly make sure that Chris and Zach know where we ended up on the budget with the utility locator and the, uh, agenda management software and, uh, the, the consolidated fee schedule. And then we'll just, and then if they have any comments, we'll leave that for the first part of the session on the 26th. And then if they don't have much, we will just move into your, uh, five-year plan, if that works.
That works great.
And I'll bring, I'll bring, I'll bring Zach up to speed on that for Wednesday night.
Great.
Is that good with, is that good with everybody else that's on the meeting? Kayleen, Melissa, Chad, David? You think, will you think that works?
Yeah, I, I think it works. I think the one thing, we didn't really hear from David at the end when we had our discussion about, about employee software versus, so Kelvin, it might behoove you to reach out to the two, at least the two that weren't here before Denise changes the budget.
I, I can, I can, I can, uh, I'll do the email. I'll ask them what their feed. I'll, I'll ask what the, if there's any further feedback on that.
Then I was partially gonna say, maybe they could, um, type up their questions and get them over to Denise. So, um, we don't take too much time reviewing the same questions that we've already discussed. And if there are duplicates, Denise can get those answered before and then.
Dave, yeah, cool. David, are you still here? I think we lost him. All right. I'll, I'll reach, I'll, I'll reach out to, uh, council members, Pat McConaughey and Jacob on the, council office budget.
Since the tentative's been made available to the public for public inspection, um, before the public hearing on the 26th, what I will do is, um, put a summary sheet together of any changes that we will be proposing in the tentative budget. And then when the resolution's adopting the tentative budget, we'll say with the following amendments. And then someone will just read those off of that summary sheet. And it could include anything that we do in the work session on the 26th as well.
That works.
Okay. I'd like to just say thank you to Denise Corbin, both chiefs, Brian, you know, everybody that was involved with this budget. Um, just thank you for your time. This, this has really been very well put together. Um, very, I know it takes a ton of time. Um, I know Denise almost blocked Corbin because he wouldn't leave her alone. But seriously, I mean, you guys, I think you did a great, you really did a great job. Thank you for your help, for, you know, just all your time and energy. I very much appreciate it.
Ditto. Thank you.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Uh, I, do we need a, with this committee meet, do we need a motion to adjourn? Rob says yes. Rob says yes. I, I see a bunch of heads nodding, but I see a bunch of mutes. Uh.
Yes, and I can't make the motion.
Neither can I. So sorry.
Uh, I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn.
And I'm gonna second it?
All those in favor?
I.
Uh, that's unanimous. Uh, meeting's adjourned. We will see everybody next, uh, Wednesday night, uh, for the regular scheduled council meeting.